We will now go into the session for Home and Youth Affairs. Let's invite the Secretary for Home and Youth Affairs to speak. And members who want to speak, please press the Request to Speak button. I will have some rules because this is a popular topic. Secretary, please. Chairman, thank you. I would like to brief members on the key areas of work of the Home and Youth Affairs Bureau, H Y A B, and its departments in two thousand and twenty four to twenty five. The Bureau released a Youth Development Blueprint in December two thousand and twenty two. We have been actively coordinating since then with various policy bureaus to implement the overall one hundred and sixty measures in the blueprint. Around fifty of those have already been completed. The remaining ones are progressing well towards the set targets. In light of the latest situation of society and our youth, the policy bureaus have updated measures in the blueprint to ensure that the blueprint can continuously respond to the needs of young people. With the resumption of normal travel, we have resumed various schemes or programs in relation to youth exchange and internship. We have implemented enhancement measures for a couple of programs and schemes to encourage participation of more young people. We have also plans to increase the total commitment for the Youth Development Fund, Y D F, by three hundred million dollars to from its current amount of six hundred million dollars. The Y D F will support the launch of a new round of the funding scheme for youth entrepreneurship in the G P A and the funding scheme for experiential programs at innovation and entrepreneurial basis and strengthen support to young youth entrepreneurs through the Alliance of Hong Kong Youth Innovation and Entrepreneurial Basis in the G P A. The two thousand and twenty three Youth Festival has organized some two hundred activities with an overall attendance of about two hundred thousand in two thousand and twenty three. The in this year, in August, we will organize the Youth Development Summit as the opening highlight of the two thousand and twenty four Youth Festival. We expect no less than one thousand persons will participate in the summit. The Bureau will continue to provide intervention to youth uniform groups for organizing activities relating to national education, including events in support of the National Security Education Day to raise people's awareness of national security, especially the young, enhancing their understanding of Constitution, basic law, and national security, and strengthening their sense of national pride and national identity. We will continue to work with the Committee on the Promotion of Civic Education to promote civic and national education outside schools and in the community, including national security education, to enhance the sense of patriotism, civic responsibilities, and awareness of the rule of law of the public. On first of April this year, a dedicated Women Affairs Team was set up under the Bureau and the post of Commissioner for Women Affairs was designated. We have key initiatives this year, including the launching of a one-star family and women information portal, organizing the first Family and Women Development Summit, and rolling out a new funding scheme on the promotion of family education. Since the seventh term District Councils took office on first of January this year, it has set a new scene for district governance. All the district council members worked proactively to ensure effective communication between the government and the pupil. They have assisted the government greatly. I look forward to continuing to work closely with these members to carry out district governance work. There are four hundred and fifty-two care teams. They have all been activated in the eighteen districts to support the district work and strengthen community network. They have visited more than thirty thousand households in need and provided them with over seven thousand times of simple support services. Care teams pool community resources together to help in emergencies and proactively assist in policy promotion. The government will continue to provide care teams with some of the resources required. The estimated provision for two thousand and twenty four to twenty five is one hundred eighty point eight million dollars. To further enhance the support for E M s, ethnic minorities to integrate into the community, the H A D will establish two new support services, support service centers for them and set up an ethnic minority care team in each of the ten E M centers. We will regularize the enhanced services provided by E M centers and continue to implement the district-based program for racial harmony. My colleagues and I are happy to answer questions from members. Thank you. Chair. Well, we can only accommodate thirteen members' questions, so I will read out the order in which members are going to speak. Mister Rock Chen, Mister Benson Look, Mister Yu Partland, Doctor Chau Man Kong, Professor Liu Chi Pang, Miss Judy Chen, Mister Vincent Cheng, Mister Lu Chong Hong, Miss Maggie Chen, Doctor So Cheng Wing, Mister Adrian Ho, Mister Lam Chun Sing, and Miss Lam So Wei. And those that come after that, the various members will not have a chance to ask questions today. Mister Rock Chen. Thank you. I will be brief. I would like to follow up on the two questions asked. First will be zero three five two. On the Alliance of Hong Kong Youth Innovation and Entrepreneurial Basis in the G P A, we have two hundred and seventeen teams recruited. And the target has been set that before two thousand and twenty six, we will have not less than one hundred teams. Why is the target so prudent? Is it due to the lack of resources? So that's my first question. Well, I still have a second question. Excuse me. My question relates to zero three five four, my next question. We have some support services for new arrivals. And I understand that some of my friends from Klansman Associations, they do not come from Guangdong Province, so they have trouble understanding Cantonese. Will the Bureau deploy more resources to educate these citizens Cantonese and some Hong Kong cultural courses? Thank you. Thank you, Mister Rock Chen, for your questions. We are very keen to support youth entrepreneurs of Hong Kong to start up their businesses in the G P A. We will soon have a new round of scheme to be implemented. I'll let the Undersecretary answer the question to provide you with more details on support to new arrivals and E M s. We have a support service center. We also have the district-based program for racial harmony. We have some E M support service centers. Not only do they support E M s, they will also support new arrivals from elsewhere. And we will regularize the district-based program for racial harmony as well as the district-based integration program. And Cantonese courses will be provided under the programs. One of the main functions of the E M service centers is to eliminate the language barrier. So for new arrivals from the mainland or E M s, they can learn Cantonese in these courses so as to facilitate their communication with other citizens of Hong Kong. I'll let the Undersecretary answer the remaining questions. Thank you, Mister Chen.
As said, in two thousand and twenty one, we have launched the first funding scheme for youth entrepreneurship in the G P A. We have approved sixteen N G Os to operate the scheme. We have recruited, as said, two hundred and seventeen teams. Three years after that, I, sorry, understand, we have two hundred and fourteen teams that are still in operation. Three of the teams, two of them had some partnership issues, so they stopped their operations. Another one has attracted overseas investment, which is why they withdrew from the scheme, but we're still happy for them. What Mister Rock Chen said about the one hundred teams to that figure is for companies or these teams that will go into mainland cities. We have teams operating in Hong Kong, but in future, we want them to go into mainland cities. Thank you. Mister Benson Look.
Thank you. I want to ask about the H Y A B oh seven four. That is my question about youth hostels. In two thousand and twenty two, Finance Committee approved one billion dollars in funding for the Bureau to practice tripartite collaboration to convert hotels into youth hostels. It has been about one and a half years, and now they're providing five hundred places. They will provide another two thousand five hundred places in the next few years. In the main reply, it is said that hotels and guesthouses now have a better business environment, and the administration has faced difficulties when negotiating with them to continue providing rooms to operate youth hostels. So I want to ask what challenges they you face specifically? Because you still have two thousand five hundred places to provide. My next question is on the two thousand and twenty four, twenty five land sale program for one oh six A area. The developer would be required to provide ten percent of the site for youth hostel. But we do not see that in the reply provided by the administration being included in there. So I want to ask how much say does the government have in this? Will you be concerned that if this requirement is implemented, there will not be any successful bids? Thank you.
I will first provide a preliminary reply. I'll let my colleagues provide the details to the questions. On hotels and guesthouses, we have subsidized N G Os to make use of such accommodation to operate youth hostels. It was first proposed in the two thousand and twenty two policy address, and three thousand places are to be provided. After the pandemic is over, once we see a recovery of the tourism industry, we have faced difficulties in seeking out hotels and guesthouses to operate youth hostels. But I appreciate the fact that even with this change, there are some hotels and guesthouses still that are willing to have their accommodation take part in this scheme. So many N G Os are liaising with hotels and guesthouses to convert some rooms to provide youth hostel places. The Undersecretary will go into details later. I think it is very important for businesses to exercise social responsibility. It's not just about them providing rooms to N G Os for the operations of youth hostels. They have converted their communal facilities to match the needs of the youth who are staying in these youth hostel rooms. And as said, because we would encourage the youth to participate in volunteer services, there has been conversion by hotels and guesthouses to provide facilities for them to hold meetings for the organization of volunteer services. Also, as said in the two thousand and twenty two policy address, N G Os are subsidized to convert hotel or guesthouse rooms into into youth hostel scheme. Excuse me, Chair, can I proceed? Yes, you may. Thank you. Apart from this, we have a site in Tongchung. The Development Bureau, when identifying sites suitable for development, they will make sure the conditions are right for re-usage. So with Mister Benson Look asking whether the requirement is imposed for ten percent of the site being a youth hostel, whether it will be the case that there will just be, there will not be any successful bids. I think that will not be the case. I believe many enterprises are keen to contribute to Hong Kong, and they will still be willing to do for the betterment of Hong Kong. Thank you.
Undersecretary, on how we are supporting N G Os, there are several projects on hand. They are, they are at a very mature stage. Now, to offer youth hostel places, there are lots of licenses to be obtained. So we are assisting hotel owners and also property owners to get the licenses. And we are all hands on deck. Like the Secretary mentioned, we have several projects under negotiation. For those projects, the rooms have already been converted to suit young people's living needs. Thank you. Mister Perry Yu.
Thank you, Chairman. My question is on my own written question, reply zero eight nine. Now, I have been very keen to know about the quality of mainland exchanges under the Education Bureau. Now, altogether, every year, some two hundred thousand Hong Kong youth would get an, get an opportunity to go to the mainland to broaden their learning experience. Now, my question is about year two thousand and twenty four and twenty five. How many more quarter places will we have? Now, the reply says the program is still under planning, but can I get a num, get a ballpark figure concerning the quality of these subsidized mainland exchange programs? Have you required the organizer to seek help from licensed travel agency to ensure the quality? Another question from Mister Tommy Zhang, reply three zero. Now, besides youth exchange program in the mainland, we also hope that there will be more two-way exchanges on academic study. We also hope to introduce, to help more young people from the mainland overseas to come to Hong Kong to get a taste of Hong Kong. Now, in year two thousand and nineteen to twenty, there were some three thousand people, three thousand, three thousand students from mainland coming to Hong Kong. In the subsequent year, there were one thousand less. So why is that?
Secretary, let me answer the last question first. We fully support the idea of two-way exchanges between students from both sides. So we do encourage return visits made by students. Now, in making arrangements for mainland students to come back to visit Hong Kong again, this is more difficult than visiting all the mainland cities because of hotel accommodation and so on. Now, there are some requirements, like a youth must be accompanied by an adult in order to book a hotel room. So with the help from Mister Perry Yu, we would like to negotiate with the trade so as to facilitate the return visits of mainland students to Hong Kong. I would advise the Undersecretary to talk about the analysis of the statistic. Concerning the quality of the exchange program, we are equally concerned about the quality. There is a marking system. Besides the involvement of travel agency, more importantly, the contents must be up to standard. For mainland exchange tours, do our young people get a chance to participate in, say, national flag hoisting events and deepen the understanding of the national development? So quantity and quality are equally important. In year two thousand and twenty four, the number of mainland exchange tours would definitely increase. Now, rather than involving the involvement of travel agency, the more important thing is to ensure that the theme of these mainland exchange tours can benefit our students. Undersecretary.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Member, for your question. Concerning the number of students in the youth exchange program in the mainland, according to last year's policy address, at least thirty thousand students would be benefited. Now, the number of, of applications made so far is encouraging. Now, from the proposals we have received so far, there is an enhancement in terms of quality. Last year, because we just resumed normal cross-bunchery travel, there wasn't a lot of time to prepare. This year, we see a significant enhancements in quality concerning return visits from students. Last year, the number was similar. We only open up, open up boundaries in February last year. So hopefully, this year, we will see more young people participating in these schemes. Doctor Chau Man Kong, thank you. I first reply one one six, Klansman Culture Promotion Scheme. Now, I am grateful for the H Y A B for launching the scheme. Some thirty million dollars will be allocated to this Klansman Associations, um, to this fund. However, we have lots of Klansman Associations, so on average, each Klansman Association only gets twenty to forty thousand dollars, so that's just nominal. So will the H A, H Y A B be able to allocate more resources for the application by Klansman Association? Now, next question, reply number six. Women Empowerment Fund, a question raised by another member. So one hundred forty projects are sponsored, and on average, each program gets uh, some forty one thousand, four hundred and ten thousand dollars, amounting to twenty one point three eight million dollars. But can we have more? Now, reply one three six. The government's Information Services, the Information Services Department has set aside some two million dollars to monitor foreign media's discourse. Now, in the mainland, there are a lot of accounts on Xiaohongshu and so on. There are ludicrous posts saying that people can get a Hong Kong permanent residency with the, um, with no trouble at all. So I think these are very misleading. So should we work with the social media companies to ensure that they will clarify misinformation for us and tell good stories of Hong Kong for us? Three questions, Secretary.
I will give a consolidated reply on the first two questions. I agree with Doctor Chau Man Kong. Klansman Associations are very important in promoting Klansman culture in Hong Kong. And we have to recognize women's contribution in the economy. That's why the two funding programs were launched by the governments. Now, true, each Klansman Association doesn't get a lot. But before this funding program, we offer nothing to the Klansman Association. Now, we are now giving, we are now injecting ten billion dollars into the fund per year for three consecutive years. So the change is drastic. Now, before the establishment of the Women's Empowerment Fund, we only offer some four million dollars in total for women organizations to organize activities. Now, this amount has been increased to twenty million dollars. This year, we are offering more than twenty million dollars. So from the increase, you can see how much importance we attach to the work of Klansman Association and women organizations. Concerning concern on mainland media, I would defer to the Director of Information Services for more information. But as you said, there is a vibrant social media ecosystem in the mainland. This term of the government dedicates more resources to monitor these social media platforms. Because of the wide usage of these platforms, we want to make use of these platforms to tell good stories of Hong Kong. Mister Flash Chan, Director of Information Services. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Member. Like the Secretary said, we are attach, we are allocating more resources to monitor posts on mainland social media platform. Maybe Doctor Qu, Doctor Chow is right, the term monitor is not very accurate. Now, concerning certain topics, we would ask our contractors to tap the response of mainland netizens on certain topics. What are their concerns? When necessary, concerning the issue of concern, we would make clarification, not necessarily on the same social media platform, maybe through clarification in person by principal officials. Professor Liu Chi Pang, thank you. Reply one two five, one two seven, and one three nine. There are nine questions involved. Now, this is about the government's support for overseas seminars or talks. That is the Sponsored Overseas Speaking Engagement Program. Now, how much of the cost is absorbed by the existing funding? And also, how do you define renowned academics, leaders, or experts? We have lots of renowned experts here as well. Will we be invited? Now, third question. I was involved in the same program. A media-sponsored overseas speaking engagement program. I have given overseas talk as well, but I want to know the K P I. How, how well did I do? So can you give me the K P Is? Thank you, Secretary. About the S O S E P, the Sponsored Overseas Speaking Engagement Program, this term of the government attaches importance to tell good stories of Hong Kong overseas. So the Information Services Department is allocate, is making use of existing resources to step up collaboration with our E T Os so as to enhance the efficiency of these activities so that we can maximize the benefits. Now, if you ask me, Professor Liu Chi Pang is definitely a renowned expert covered under the scope of the scheme. You are an expert on the history of Hong Kong and the country. Now, the I S D would collaborate with our E T Os whenever there are activities. The I S D would sponsor renowned experts or speakers to go to the place to tell good stories of Hong Kong. So our objective is clear, that is to tell good stories of Hong Kong overseas. We have limited resources, but with the existing resources, we can work with the E T Os to make this happen. Director of Information Services.
Thank you.
I think this is a good opportunity through this program to tell good stories of Hong Kong. This is a pilot scheme. We have observed that with more communications with ETOs, they want to host events with renowned speakers from Hong Kong. But sometimes the speakers are unwilling because they cannot afford the cost of commuting or getting to the place and so on, which is why we think that with the resources of the ISD, we can help facilitate the arrangements. If it is suitable, for example, have a an academic in a particular area speak at a event, then we will try to contact that academic. This is just a preliminary idea. We that's why I do not have any estimations as to how men, how much we'll need. Well, Mister Professor Lai also asked you about the KPIs to be set. Well, we will have some evaluation questionnaires for audiences. And hopefully we can get some feedback. Thank you. Miss Judy Chan, thank you. I want to ask about questions nine and ninety six. In the second half of this year, it is said that a new scheme to promote family education will be implemented for five years. It will promote the core values of families as well as family building and so on. So for those who are going to submit bits for the operations of this scheme, it would usually, well, at least the target group will be grassroots families. But I think with the reinforcement of family values, we shouldn't focus only on grassroots families, middle class or even the ones who are very rich would want to have some help in family education. But we often see that it is hard for NGOs to get in touch with these families. Are there any measures of this funding scheme that will be able to remove the barrier? For zero nine six, it is a question that I asked. There are over three thousand three new buildings. And last week, we did observe, unfortunately, there was a fire at the new Lucky House. And new Lucky House has owner's corporation. But they were not doing so well in fire safety, thus causing the breakout of a fire, which is very unfortunate. And it is said in the reply that the support to be provided to three new buildings will be reviewed from time to time. Apart from the advice to be given in relation to fire safety, are there any support measures in place to support three new buildings to enhance their capabilities to fight fires? Is there any more that the bureau can do? Thank you. On the funding scheme to promote family education, we, it is a scheme that we implement with the promotion of the core family values in mind. But this is just one of the measures that we have. Before the family council would have four million dollars in funding, we have increased the funding to be provided to family council this year. And they can, with reference to the needs of families, implement different activities. Before it would be the case that a theme would be required. It is as said by the member, because we have different types of families in mind, we want to allow the flexibility of different activities being held for different groups. So this is just the first step that we're taking with the funding scheme. We will also have the Women and Family Development Summit to be held for the fair first time this year. And in the summit, we can focus on discussions on the relevant issues. I believe other members may ask about the support to be given to three new buildings. Chair, allow me to continue. Well, we have our liaison officers in the Home Affairs Department that would liaise with residents of three new buildings. And we also have the BM Pass scheme, a professional service advisory scheme that would provide advice to three new building residents. Before, we had a similar scheme, but it was a bit lacking in the sense that it will provide, it would not provide support based on the age of buildings. Now, the BM Pass scheme has this issue resolved. So we'll make sure to give the support needed to three new buildings of different ages. Thank you, Mister Finzen Cheng. I also want to ask about three new buildings. The question is oh nine oh three. I do see from the figures provided by the administration that the measures in place are effectiveness in helping residents form OCs, owner's corporations. It is said that the relevant scheme will be regularized. Will you consider implementing some new arrangements for this new scheme upon the regularization of the scheme? I also have another question about, well, in fact, the incident of New Lucky House. I also would like to thank care teams for providing great help during the incident. They have really helped rationalize the arrangements, coordinating different departments. So I think we can really learn from the experience to see how we can even use care teams better in future. Let me get back to what I'm saying. There are some orders that owners' corporations would have to comply with, with reference to building management. I believe there is a liaison mechanism in place. But how effective is it at the moment? We really need to ensure that fire safety is guaranteed. We should perhaps have the bureau liaise with the Buildings Department to help buildings comply with the orders issued by Buildings Department. Thank you. Secretary. Thank you. On the questions asked by Mister Finzen Cheng, as you may be quite familiar with building management issues. It, what I said about with the change made to the scheme, that was actually, the suggestion was actually provided by Mister Finzen Cheng. So I do appreciate your input so far. There are different committees in different districts. There is the Fire Safety Committee. And we have been working with them. We will also have care teams work with these committees to enhance awareness of the public on fire safety related issues. We also have a cross departmental working group that will deal with coordination when buildings have received orders issued by the relevant departments. We do want owners to manage their own buildings. But if they face difficulties, we do want to provide the support that they need to remove the barriers that they are facing. Of course, we can also review whether there is any need to improve legislation. For example, we are, we have introduced a bill on building management into the council recently. It will help enhance owner's participation in large scale maintenance procurement, which is why we think it will in turn facilitate the management of buildings. Thank you. I'll let my colleague answer the rest. Thank you. We have different bureaus departments as well as the URA in the cross departmental working group and the HYAB is mainly responsible for removing the difficulties, the barriers that owners face, as said by the secretary. We will, after that, report to the Buildings Department to deal with some issues and with reference to circumstances, they may initiate prosecution. Thank you, Mister Lu Chong Hong. Thank you. I want to follow up on Mister Kot Wai Kang's question zero four seven on family education. I am very glad that with the new scheme that will tie in with the law of the PRC on family education promotion, promoting core family values. For every round, only three to four projects will be sponsored. Will you allow for different skills of different projects so as to facilitate support being given to different types of families? Apart from holding activities, we should make use of district network and social media to get in touch with parents. We can perhaps also have ambassadors in the communities that can promote family education in the communities. We can perhaps also prepare materials to educate the public on the needs of children for parents' reference. My second question relates to question oh one one on youth exchange. In two thousand twenty three, twenty four, we have only two thousand nine hundred people participating in the schemes. In two thousand twenty four, twenty five, the KPI is set at thirty thousand. The increase is tenfold. I do appreciate the bureau setting such a high target because I do think the youth of Hong Kong should have more exchanges with the youth of the mainland. But how will you be able to achieve this target? You also have a scheme for students to practice internship in the mainland. So there will be some competition. How will you be able to achieve this target of thirty thousand? Thank you.
Secretary. Thank you, chairman. Like Mister Michael Look, we attach a lot of importance to family building, family education and family culture. So we have allocated more funding and adjusted the operation of the funding scheme so that more organizations can apply for funding to organize activities to the benefit of family education. The directions mentioned by Mister Michael Look, those activities are also covered by the scheme. Now, in the third quarter this year, we are going to host the first family and women development summit. Now, this is not just a two day summit meeting. Through organizing the summit, we can enhance the awareness in society for family building. I will invite Mister Leng to supplement on the numbers. Thank you, Mister Look. I would like to clarify the reply, that is HYAB zero one one. We are talking about the number of interns. So for the past two years, there were some two thousand six hundred participants. We don't have the number of participants in the exchanges yet because the cycle is still ongoing. For mainland and overseas exchanges, there are still a lot of groups yet to set out. So we are confident that we can meet the thirty thousand participants KPI because the, because all the applicants have been approved. And for the internship program, we do not limit the eligibility to students with a degree attainment. So rest assured, a lot of students with a diploma also benefited from our internship programs. Miss Maggie Chan, thank you, chairman. A reply is on reply seven and nine concerning women affairs. I appreciate the government's creating the post of commissioner for women affairs and also the dedicated team to ensure high quality developments of women in society. Now, that aligns with my motion a year ago on comprehensively promoting women's developments in Hong Kong. It shows that the government attaches importance to the motion passed by the council. But I think the government should be more focused on formulation of women's policy. Now, in the second half of the year, there will be three mega events. I hope that by these major events, we can create an ambience in society favorable for the developments of women in Hong Kong. And also for the formulation, for the um publication of a white paper on women's development in Hong Kong. Now, there are six civil service positions under the Women Affairs Team consisting of civil servants and non civil service contract staff. Now, in the second half of this year, there will be the launch of a one stop family and women information platform. There will also be the first family and women development summit. And also, together with the women or the family council, um the five year scheme on promoting family building and culture will be launched. However, in terms of manpower, the reply says is yet to be confirmed. But the KPI for these three activities are all set for the second half of the year, but still we don't have the manpower available. So why is that? And do we have enough time to achieve the KPIs? Secretary. I thank the member and other members for supporting our work on promoting family and women developments. We have taken on board members' views on formulation of policies. We have set up a women affairs team. We do have a manpower shortage. Currently, the team is filled by internal redeployments of manpower. Concerning the actual preparatory work, may I invite Mister Nick Aoyang, Deputy Secretary, to supplement? Thank you. As mentioned in the reply, besides the six civil servants, Thank you. As mentioned in the reply, besides the six civil servants, we have hired nine non-civil service contract staff to help. Now, with the implementation of the new schemes, we are going to hire more hands. So the, the target is the same. All the measures mentioned in the policy address will be launched in the second half of the year. Doctor So Jang Wing, thank you, Chairman. Two questions. First, my own question. Reply number eighty-one. My question was about the implementation of the measures set out on the Youth Development Blueprint and the budget for the blueprint. The reply is very comprehensive, but I have a question concerning one sentence, the reply. It says we don't maintain record of the other departments' revised estimates. We all know that to promote youth developments, I N T departments and the Education Bureau must also be involved. Miss Alice Mack also said that you need other bureaus' help to fulfill the vision in the Youth Development Blueprint. Well, if you are saying you don't have information on the estimates on measures implemented by other bureaus or departments, then I don't know how you're going to take forward the measures on the Youth Development Blueprint together with other departments. So can the H Y A B be given more power to implement the Youth Development Blueprint? Second question on reply one one zero. So my question was about, uh that is Miss Starry Lee's question, that is about the arrangement of the celebration of the seventy-fifth anniversary of the founding of the country. Now, the H A B, the Home Affairs Department had, has achieved a lot of things with the twenty-seven million dollar budget, a lot of fireworks, and also the eighteen district celebration activities. Now, the reply says that the governments would, through a series of thematic national day celebration activities, showcase to all visitors from the mainland and other places the unique advantages and attractions of Hong Kong in terms of the staunch support we receive from the motherland and our global outlook. There is no mention of how you are going to achieve that. Were there any collaborations with other G B A mainland cities? Thank you. Secretary, two questions. Thank you. The first question, zero eight one. All bureaus and departments attach importance to youth work. Like us, many bureaus and departments are making use of the existing resources to discharge youth work. So many bureaus and departments have more than one project on hand, and it is not easy to keep top on the estimates for each project. So I can promise you, each bureau and department is making the best use of the existing resources to promote youth work. Concerning celebration for the seventy-fifth anniversary of the founding of our country, the Chief Secretary for Administration and also the Deputy Secretary for Administration and also the committees they lead have convened two meetings. And bureaus and departments are requested, are required to organize celebration activities with the existing resources. So the Home Affairs Departments and other departments are in full steam in organizing celebrate, celebration activities. Now, in the, in due course, we will be in a better position to report to members how we will publicize the event. Mister Chan, Mister Eric Chan, Commissioner for Youth. Just very briefly, Miss, uh Doctor So is concerned how we are going to ensure that all measures on the Youth Development Blueprints can be implemented. Now, there is the Youth Development Council, Youth Development Commission, chaired by the Chief Secretary for Administration. All relevant bureaus and departments have to report to the committee. Now, in February, at the panel of Latch Call, we have reported to members the one-year progress of since the announcements of the Youth Development Blueprint. So we have a high-level steering to ensure that all measures will be implemented. Mister Adrian Ho, thank you. Reply zero four nine, Miss Leitong Quack's question. Mister Li enquired about the number of participants on the Happy Hong Kong activities and also the cost and whether it is cost-effective. Now, the reply didn't give us a direct answer, but I think at least there should be K P Is measuring the efficacy of these activities. So will the government give me these information? Now, another buzzword in society is wave of closure of business. At this juncture, I think we still need to organize more activities which can boost the mood in society. So after the conclusion of Happy Hong Kong, will there be a second round and what will the budget be? Second question. Reply forty-three, Miss Lillian Quack's question on Youth Hostel Scheme. Now, the longest stay, the longest duration of stay under the Youth Hostel Scheme is five years. I think this is very reasonable. It can ensure the turnover and also fairness under the Youth Hostel Scheme. It also encourages youth tenants in youth hostel actively plan for the next stage of their life. Now, according to the reply, N G Os operating the youth hostels would offer counseling services and guidances to youth tenants who have moved out. What about the governments? How do you keep top of the developments of these young people? This will help us take a tally of the effectiveness of the scheme as well. Secretary. First, on resources allocated to the Happy Hong Kong Campaign. Now, same answer, we are utilizing existing resources. I think the member is well aware that for prioritized activities, even without additional resources, we will still take forward these activities, including Happy Hong Kong and the Eighteen District Day and Night Vibes. We are absorbing the costs with our existing resources. Besides our bureau, other N G Os are also involved in organizing activities under the Happy Hong Kong Campaign without additional resources. So that's the same everywhere. So it is difficult for me to tell you the estimates or the budgets for these activities. We are just absorbing the extra workload with the same establishment. So we made these happen without additional financial and manpower resources. On Youth Hostel Scheme and its effectiveness, under the scheme where hotel and hostel rooms are converted into youth hostel spaces, the program has run for a little more than a year. Now, there is also a funding scheme to support N G Os to build youth hostels. We saw that the Youth Hostel Scheme was beneficial to the youth tenants. So we would communicate with the residents in youth hostel schemes. Say, for example, how they are spending the cost saved and the time saved. Some of these tenants enrolled themselves in a degree or diploma program with the time and money saved. So this is really positive. We also have a youth link established in September last year. The purpose is to create a network covering young people who are also participants in our various schemes so that we can keep top of the growth.
Mister Lam Chan Sing, thank you. My question relates to a question asked by Mister Chow Su Chong, H Y A B one hundred. I heard the secretary said to media about the new Lucky House incident. It was said that fifty contact, uh fifty care teams had been contacted and thirty of them gave a reply right away. And some of them gave a reply after a reminder issued, is issued by the bureau. Nine of them never gave a reply at all. So I want to ask if these care teams have dedicated offices. Is it the case that because they do not have an office, you could not reach out to them? We also have some singleton elderly households or other needy households. Um, but specifically with the singleton elderly households, often they are hidden, so we don't know that they need help. How can care teams reach out to these? We do understand that care team members do not have training in the regard, but we do want to make sure assistance is provided to these hidden singleton fam, elderly households. We want to make sure if care teams can't help, referrals should be made so that professional support can be provided. Thank you, Secretary. Thank you. We did see in the past journalists trying to test out the performance of care teams and in fact that causes a burden on care teams. Care team members are volunteers with the provision of their services. We have set K P Is. We have seen them trying their best. But with people trying to test whether they can get a reply, it actually affects care teams' operations in the provision of their service. With that said, even though care team members are volunteers, as the member mentioned, for the new Lucky House incident, we have twenty care teams in the Yaochimong District and all of the members were deployed for several days, providing support to affected residents and visitors round the clock. And in fact, support is still being provided to certain affected visitors. We have seen care teams trying their best to help communities. Mister Lem asked if it is because they do not have a dedicated office that has caused some difficulties in reaching out to them. We do want to provide more support to care teams, but the concept of care teams is having collaboration among different sectors of the community and the government will only provide a certain level of support. We do therefore call for other sectors to provide more help to care teams so that they will have more resources for their operations on support to be provided to hidden elderly households that need help. Right now, the Social Welfare Department does have some support measures in place and if necessary, referrals can be made by care teams to the Social Welfare Department to provide assistance to these households. In fact, in the anti-chamber exchange session last week, we have discussed this. We discussed the fact that care teams are not all-encompassing. We do want care teams to provide a certain level of assistance, but they cannot replace the services provided by professionals such as those in the Social Welfare Department. We just want to have care teams disseminate information required if necessary. All right, Mister Lim, so one, thank you. I want to ask about support to be provided to divorcees and care teams. We have twenty-six thousand odd divorce cases. It has been, it is a record high. And in this year, we will have the pilot scheme on maintenance mediation. How many people do you expect that will benefit from this scheme? In fact, I signed a petition and have met with the secretary to call for support to be provided to divorcees on maintenance. I do appreciate the secretary providing some improvement in this regard, but I want to ask if there will be even more support for divorcees. It's not just females, it's also males that have been impacted by the divorce process. And they feel quite hurt when they discuss maintenance matters. So can we draw reference from other examples in Singapore or other Southeast Asian countries that can provide more support to divorcees? And I do appreciate the fact that there will be a one-stop information portal for family and women that will provide some information for divorcees. But what kind of information will be disseminated on there specifically on care teams? I understand that care teams can't help with everything, but we have seen tragedies that happened with carers unable to handle the pressure. And we have carers not just from grassroots that are facing pressure, we also have carers from middle-class or even high-class families facing difficulties. We need to have care teams with leaders that are more proficient in providing support. We shouldn't be only doing the, excuse my language, low-level stuff. We should have more support for different classes to support their needs. Thank you. Secretary. Thank you. The two questions asked, we have discussed these issues at other meetings of the council. We do want to provide support to divorcees to deal with maintenance matters, which is why we have proposed the Maintenance Mediation Pilot Scheme in the policy address. Through mediation, we can provide some sort of support in that process for divorcees. But we understand divorcees also face other difficulties. We are now gathering data and compiling analyses. Once we have the results, we will see what direction we're going to take in future. If there are other ways that we can take that we can take, for example, administrative arrangements that we can implement to try to deal with the issue, we are more than willing to do that, and we can discuss with members these arrangements. On another issue with divorcees, if a divorced woman requires support, they can seek help from the Social Welfare Department through integrated family service centers. There are social workers posted in those centers to deal with these matters. The one-stop information portal and the Women Affairs Team will take a role of disseminating information necessary for them so that they know more about the, what they have to do. On care teams, as said, care teams should not only deal with matters relating to grassroots. We have four hundred and fifty-two care teams in all districts of Hong Kong. There are different classes of citizens in different districts. So care teams will see what kind of services they should provide with reference to the local circumstances. In the Southern District and Chunwan District, there is a pilot scheme in place for care teams to provide elderly support. And on mental health support, we are talking amongst ourselves what kind of role care teams can play. But let me just say this, care teams is a bridge for citizens and departments and provide support to citizens if necessary. I was going to let Miss Chan Yiming ask the question and Miss Lillian Quox ask the question. Um but unfortunately, everyone went over the limit, so we have to end the meeting here. We'll resume the meeting at nine tomorrow. Thank you.